This conference will now be recorded.
Is that better?
Um, it was working better.
The chat said no armor.
Oh.
It's working now. Thank you.
Got a motion for the April 30th and May 7th meeting in Plankton.
Make the motion.
Motion second.
Second.
Any discussion?
We'll call Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Todd.
Cindy.
Hi.
Mike.
Aye.
County Attorney is gonna be a little late today, I guess. May show up a little later. Uh, who the Sheriff's report for April?
Yeah, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning. I have April fees for you this morning in the amount of $1,612.64.
Motion, I accept that. Fees for April?
Moment.
Second. Motion second. Any other discussion?
We'll call Cindy. Hi. Todd.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Todd.
And so that's all I have for the board this morning unless they have questions for me. Anybody in the public? All right. Thank you.
Do we have any update on the red school situation in like months or?
Uh, the case is now with county attorney's office for his review. And considering convening grand jury, the county grand jury on that case, so. That's all I could say publicly.
That's right. I was just curious.
So where's got the case now? Yeah?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Department head discussion. And the department head? Concerns?
Uh, Rachel wanted me to say that she's out of the office, so the video and board proceedings will not be out until tomorrow if anybody's wanting to listen to it.
Yeah, Ryan said?
Well, he could, but she's been doing it. Yeah, he's probably could do it, I'm sure.
I thought we switched it. I thought we had Ryan start doing that now. But that's okay.
It hasn't happened yet.
That's fine.
But yeah, well, I mean, it probably should be. I guess if he comes, it can tell him to do it because Jaxi's not gonna be here until she can't do it, so.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other?
Morning, Rachel.
Morning. Couple of things, um. DOT received salt bids for next year. Actually saw a decrease in price again, which is surprising, but we've pre-ordered 1,200 tons of salt for next winter at $8,450 a ton. Last year's price was 1,200 ton at $87 a ton, so. But it's not our, it seems like this is the third year, third different supplier, so. The normal suppliers are getting undercut by ones that we haven't had before, but uh, salt, salt. So where's it coming out of? Uh, I don't recall who the lower, the low bid was, but. Um, and then I have just as an update. We're doing the Iowa County Engineers' Safety Action Plans, and Safety Action Plans are for to get some of the federal funding that's out there for Safe Streets for All SS4A Grants. The feds require that there's a Safety Action Plan active in the counties, and we've had that discussion here a while ago to proceed with having a Safety Action Plan now with a consultant. One of the next steps for us is to secure a meeting date and time, and what's been chosen for Mitchell County is October 17th, 2024, and have a meeting with, um, it would be Iowa State Patrol, Sheriff's Office, Public Health, Court Supervisors, County Engineer, EMA, EMS, Fire Departments and stuff, and have a sit-down meeting and discuss Safety Action Plans as far as, um, you know, what's, what are the counties seeing as distracted drivers, older drivers, things like that on the public roadways. And once we think, we get a plan put together, and once we have something, we can probably be more qualified to get these SS4A grants for, for infrastructure improvements through the federal government, but until we have that meeting. So I'm thinking, since we have it set up and it's kind of an all-day thing, at least a half a day for the the whole group, and then the other half a day is just for the county engineer and the consultant to go through things and iron things out, so. We're looking at October 17th, 2024, and I'm hoping we can probably just use this room, since it's large enough to take maybe 20 to 30 people to, you know. Not everybody's gonna have to sit down and write things down, but just be present to. I don't know what the consultants ask or anything like that, but we've got flyers and invitations to send out to, but the first step for us is to secure this room, so I'm hoping it's available then, and secure this room from about 8 o'clock until, I think it was, uh, 8 o'clock till 2 o'clock, so. Once we get that secured, then I can send that into the consultant, and we can get other stuff, uh, set up to continue with that procedure. Last week I got a call from Howard County Engineer, um, he was having trouble with getting his budget approved or program approved because he's got a bridge on the county line that, uh, we didn't have in our program because he didn't tell me about it. Uh, we've got a bridge that we have to help participate in the construction of for, I think it was fiscal '28, so that's gonna be something that I've gotta reprogram for our bridge funding as well, so it's probably gonna be our half will probably be a $200,000 expense for the bridge on that county line, so. I'll have to do some shuffling for next year's, what we do next year's program to shuffle around and see where our bridge funding is and what we might have to push back in order to fund their bridge, or half of their bridges, as it's on the county line, so.
That north of Lake Kendrick?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's on that stretch of road. I can't remember which bridge it is. There's a couple of them up there. I just don't recall which bridge it is. I think there's one that might be posted. Perhaps I'm up there every while, so. So we'll have some funding to contribute to that bridge too, so that'll kind of maybe throw a wrench in the gears of, of our plans that we're trying to keep things moving to, but.
Is that, uh, county line road going south? That's also in some plans too.
Yeah, that's, that's part of our plan. I think we've got that fiscal '26 for a Colton Place recycle and overlay, and he's aware of that too. We're just gonna figure out. I think we're using farm-to-market funds. I don't know if he's got farm-to-market funds to do it, or if he's gonna try to use TIP. We've gotta get together and find out for sure exactly what funding we're both using, so we can make sure that it gets paid that way. Maybe we pay for it all if he reverses us with their TIP, or if he's got farm market funds, that it kinda goes through the DOT when he gets between payments, so. So maybe we gotta iron out between he and I, so. So. Um, those are most of the updates I have for you today, other than the professional services agreement I mentioned last week for uh, WHK has to prompt do a, a, a more detailed survey on the bridges over on Indigo. These are short-span bridges that aren't in the federal system, but are, uh, are needing to be replaced due to their age and, uh, the amount, the loads that are going over it now are accelerating some of that deterioration a bit more, so. What they're proposing is to do a, uh, the base, the base fee of $6,200, which will include the initial survey of, of both locations, if they, well, not both locations, but to do the initial, uh, I don't really wanna read everything, but they're doing, gonna do their project management, field survey, and hydraulic assessment. And then alternate one is, is if they have to do a full hydraulic analysis on, on one bridge, it'll be $4900 additional, and then if they gotta do both, it'll be $8,600, but I don't think they'll need to do a full hydraulic analysis on, on both of them. They'll probably will do the hydraulic analysis on one, since they're on the same stream within a half a mile of each other, that the one hydraulic, as long as we hydraulically analyze it for the, the more critical one, which is where the property sits on the west side of that structure, on the southwest side. The issue is we don't wanna, we don't wanna undersize it to backwater up on property that has, you know, buildings and structures on it, so they'll do a more detailed, uh, survey on it and do an analysis on that, and give us the information as to what, what we can put in there for structures. It may be something we can do internally to place, but in the meantime, that's what we're looking at having them do.
So for both of these, there's no state money assistance for either one of these, correct?
No, because they're not federally funded bridges. They're, they're shorter than 20 foot wagons, and so they're local bridges.
It's all our money?
Yep. So I make a recommendation, we approve this professional service agreement, get the, uh, get the survey hydraulic analysis going, so move.
Your motion is our second.
My second.
Your second. Any other discussion? We'll call.
Um, Jim.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Cindy. Hi.
Mike.
Aye.
Thank you. That's all I got for you this morning.
Thank you.
Aye.
Approve the recorder's monthly report for April? How many, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten? Motion is our second.
Our second.
We have, uh, total amount paid at county treasurer of $9,044.19.
We'll call Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Mike.
Aye.
Todd.
Aye.
Cindy.
Morning, Jenna.
Morning. Morning.
The treasurer's monthly report for April.
Hi, uh, Gabe. Rachel, look happy you guys all have it. So, uh, going over this, total motor vehicle driver's license connect collections was $341,337.49. Of that, Mitchell County got $10,654.60. As I said last week, we do have the governor sign the bill last week to increase all the fees, so for titles, for a lot of items, um, we're gonna get $10 more for payment process, tidily, uh, security interest. That goes into effect January 1st. So those numbers should go up considerably from getting $2.
Twelve hundred.
$12, yeah. It's about 20 years in the making. I know since I've been at the treasurer, we've had that on our goals list for six, seven years, so that was really great to get happening, so. Uh, property taxes we collected was 1.63 million. Penalties of that were $9,000. Uh, special assessments, we had collected $1,254.31. We had one tax sale certificate redeemed, and we collected $5,671 in futures. And interest last month was $61,442.96. And missed lanes receipts processed, we processed 40 at $608,42. So for a total of $2,672,174.06 is what we collected and processed last month. Any questions?
Those futures, do they go right into the lump sum, or do they go into a different account?
Futures go into a different fund until July, when we process next year's or this coming year's property tax statements, and then they show as a credit. Um, it pushes over once the bills are created, once the levies are out, and Rachel creates all that, then it dumps them over so that they shows, um, prepaid taxes on people's statements. They're actually doing down payments on their property taxes, so it's just sitting in the fund right now. A lot of people that have, um, they get in the tax sales circle, or vicious circle, where they go on tax sale every two years and get a notice, and then they pay it off. Um, or older individuals that are on limited income, they can manage their budget and come in and pay us every month. I'll help them figure out what 12 months would be, or if they wanna do it online, they could. Iowa Treasurer's website automatically figures if you want to make weekly payments or monthly payments. It takes what your taxable is, it just figures it out for you, so you can budget for the whole year. So your expenses are the same, so futures we're just collecting ahead of time. Some of them, when we did the delinquent statements, it did show, um, April and, and May penalties, and if they paid in April, they really didn't know us that. We don't take that as a penalty, we put it as futures. Because it wasn't actually a penalty that was included that time, so. Thank you.
All right. We have a motion to approve the treasury report for April.
Second.
Your motion is our second.
Our second.
That's up. Any other discussion?
We'll call Todd.
Aye.
Cindy. Hi. Mike.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
I love you.
Right, uh, right now, we have $105,000 of delinquent property taxes. That's 126 parcels. Um, tax sale notices have been sent out, um, the end of, I think it's the 24th is the last date for someone, for those out there, to not get your name on paper, pay your taxes before the 24th, and then tax sales of their money in June. Normally, we, in the past, we sold like 84 parcels for about $84,000. Last year, we were under 30, so hopefully we'll get that done again this year, so.
Discussion on Primrose Avenue Bridge and March Avenue, West of Stacy.
So I put that on there, the Primrose Bridge. A lot of people on land on both sides of the river there. They kinda would like that bridge in just for access, and, uh, and, uh, March Avenue on the west edge of Stacyville, and while you're talking about doing Limefield Road, but you look at this road, it's a lot worse than. I think the, things should take priority, as far as the worst road should be replaced before you do another road that doesn't, ain't as bad. Same way with the bridge. That bridge has been closed for a long time. There's a big Iowa Select building on the other side. They would like it done. It's closest route to the highway. There's 20 employees go there every day. There's trucks, service people. It's an inconvenience going the way around the mile, especially the one-way going around the two-mile section, so. I don't know. Anyway, there's money in the local option and sales tax fund that would probably cover both of these, so. I just thought I'd bring it up for discussion, if we could figure out a plan to get it taken care of, you know. Yeah, to take care of the needs of the county before the wants. I know some people want donations, but we got the needs too, so. That's where I feel should happen.
Just for clarity, Limefield is a farm-to-market road, so that's using farm-to-market funds, and March Avenue is not farm-to-market, so that's gotta be local.
Yeah, but.
So comparing the two doesn't really.
Well, I'm just saying, it's, it's worse. It's more shaky.
Sure, it's worse, but we've gotta have the funding to do it, so.
Yeah, it's only a mile. Well, that's what I said, or half a mile. Well, we got local.
You know, and the cities gotta have their funding, you know, unless, unless something else changes.
Yeah.
They gotta be on board with the schedule too.
Yep. I mean, it's a, I mean, there's money in the local option sales tax fund that could cover those two.
Yeah, for that half a mile, we're estimating maybe, since it's similar to what Hickory Avenue was in Tolerville, we're looking at $8,900 for that half a mile.
Okay, let's stay so if they have.
If they get up to pick and forth, yeah.
Yeah.
And this program for fiscal '27 right now, and if, if things change, we can probably advance it to '26 if we need to, but we already got fiscal '25 program budget out approved, so. And we've got other projects going on right now that we're designing for, for fiscal '25.
So I agree with everything you said. I was gonna actually say some of the same things you did say, so I agree with that. Regardless of the bridge, uh, it's a five-year plan. We've got nine structures planned in the five-year plan to be done. Eight of them, if you do done, the one that's south of McIntyre, which the grant's gonna be in for that. We have a need of these other ones to be done, so to bump this one on a Class B road doesn't seem responsible to me to be doing that, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support doing the bridge. We get those other nine done, maybe we can look at it, but.
Are any of them on a Class B road?
No, they're not.
What looks considered Class B?
Uh, you drive them. Also, Class B road is a lower traffic road.
This would be a higher traffic road with the, with what's on the other side now.
That's your estimation.
Well, I mean, you do your, I don't know how you can do a traffic count on a road that's been closed, you know. Well, hey, my estimate.
I'll do these nine first that are already planned in the five-year plan.
That's my, that's my plan. Well, these are, this one's been broken longer. Why don't you close one of them roads and then fix this one?
I said my point.
Yeah, okay, I'm saying my point, so. I was just speaking for the taxpayers, that that's a big inconvenience for.
The bridge on Primrose, I've talked to a bunch of farmers that ha, have hog buildings just 'cause we've been talking about this for a while, and they're not sure if Iowa Select really would want that bridge fixed because it's a low-disease traffic area, and that's probably a reason, one of the reasons that they built there.
Well, they, they were under the understanding, when they built there, that bridge was gonna be fixed, is what they told me, and yes, they do wanna fix, because their workers, plenty of workers need to go there every day, so they're gonna run a hundred miles of gravel to get there, otherwise they'd have a mile.
I, I'm just saying my point too, that.
No, I talked to, they go stop down their office.
Yeah, there's a reason why, uh, Pinniken Farms built way in the back, different areas, um. There's farmers that would like to build off the road a lot farther if they could, just for the, um, and I, I just talked to them about it.
Who, Iowa Select?
Any of these farmers that have hog buildings.
Well, I'm just saying Iowa Select, so.
Cause they would like to.
There's a reach out, I mean.
Lower disease control area, the traffic.
Traffic doesn't cause disease. I don't know how.
A local farmer's carrying a trailer of hogs, and they had it, it gets in the air, just like weeds.
Oh, so.
That's just what I've been.
Yep.
Cause it was out when they built there.
Exactly, and they were under the understanding it was gonna be fixed when they built there because of the amount of traffic that was gonna go there, and it's the shortest route to the highway.
I don't recall, Rich, when I worked for you, that anybody ever came in and said that we were expected to build that bridge because they're building that hog confinement area.
No, I don't.
I don't recall that discussion ever.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what their expectations were. Nobody really, you know. Nobody, nobody from even, I, I don't think anybody from my office nor the board at the time had promised anybody the bridge would be repaid because it was a Level B road. Well, Level B is a minimum maintenance road where it's probably a second priority to Level A roads and a higher priority than a Level C road, which is gated into lock, but a minimum ma, on our minimum maintenance roads in this county and are, are probably, you can hardly differentiate whether it's a Level B or Level C. Typically, a Level, a Level B road is a dirt path, and we've kind of, over the years, been urged to keep them up into a higher standard than what they normally would be, and back, I don't know when the Level Bs were designated. Long before I ever came here, long, probably before Jim Hyde was my credit assessor, that they were delegated as Level B roads because there was nobody living on these roads, um, and it was a, it was a way to save money on maintenance costs, and so according to the code of Iowa, Level B roads don't, aren't maintained to a higher standard and may not have repaired structures, may not have a structure at all, may not be ablated every, every meet or every year, even maybe once or twice a year. That's the definition of a Level B road. Whether or not people use it for shortcuts, that's, that's the prerogative, but just as an information of what a Level B is, they were delegated years ago because they weren't, they weren't populated by, um, homesteads or anything like that, so it was a way to, kind of, to start saving money on regular maintenance of, and trying to, trying to maintain the other kind of the higher travel routes and. Just, just refer to the information, and I, I understand. I'm just speaking for the taxpayers, what they're expecting, you know, they, they see that the board of supervisors can donate money to places, so. Not, I, I know, I know, I'm just saying, you know, the word's out there that they're donating money, so why can't you fix their bridge? I'm just speaking for the people. So. Just wanted for consideration to be, you know. It's all I got, I guess.
All right. Keep that in mind, I guess.
Uh, this'll be over.
Possible, or, excuse me, discussion, possible action under gaming services from Northland Securities to act as replacement agent for Mitchell County.
So we've been going through our urban renewal plan. Last Wednesday, there was a meeting with the county attorney, Planscape Partners, Sidney and myself, we met with John Daddos, what, on a conference call. Uh, the question, uh, he was presented their urban renewal plan. The question asked to him was, what's the best avenue now for Mitchell County to proceed with this? He said, uh, best route for us, his, his recommendation, the best route would be the internal loan is the first thing. Second thing would be a bank loan, and then after that, then it would be a, a bond for. Asked him about, um, uh, someone continued to help us with that process, nor, her, Planscape was done with this now because it's, we're getting into the financial side of it. He said that Northland Securities has worked with us in the past, and he would recommend that they assist us with that. So reached out to Heidi. Heidi's, uh, had a conversation with her. What her role would be, and that's, Heidi is Northland Securities, would be to act as a placement agent, and placement agent can go through the Mitchell County's uh, books, look and see what avenues there are for an internal loan, can also contact banks, as far as the number of banks, look enough interest rates, terms, that type of thing, and then can also do the bonding thing, so that's that's what this is about. This is a disclosure that, uh, basically legally says that she can do those services for us. This is, uh, as it says on here, it's, uh, it's a, it's engagement is non-binding, meaning if we choose not, uh, to do anything, there's, there's no oblig, no obligation to undertake the issue. So that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. This would be the next step for what we're doing.
And Heidi, you're on too. You have a question?
I am. Can everyone hear me?
So, I have a question. What good was Planscape for us?
They put together, we had grant agreements with the cities, the, the departments. They put together urban renewal plan. They worked needed a bunch of the parcels that needed to be put into the urban renewal plan. Uh, they did quite a bit of that work.
And that's all she could have done?
I'm not sure. I don't know. It's, it's work that needed to be done. You asked the question, what good was, were they?
Well, no, they gave us bad advice, you know.
Well, that's your opinion, but I don't.
Opinion, I was going against Iowa code, Rachel said that, so. I'm, uh, yeah.
We, we did not do anything against Iowa code. We have not done anything illegal, okay? We have not done anything illegal.
No, because Rachel put her foot down and said no. So whatever, you can.
Okay, this is the next step, so this is, this is where we're at.
So you're gonna borrow money for the county, pay interest, whatever, and then donate it, correct? So. But we can't put it on a bridge?
I'm, I'm not gonna get into that with you.
Well, I'm just.
We have, we have discussed this.
I know.
Three members have approved this, and we are moving forward with this.
Okay.
The majority of the board wants to do it. I'm not looking back and talking about history because we have decided we're moving forward with this.
Yeah.
If, if we approve this, we're continuing to move forward. I'm not gonna look backwards constantly because three of us.
Like stating the facts.
You're just saying a lot.
Yep. Looking out for the taxpayers is what I'm doing, but anyway.
Very good. Totally.
Just want people to be aware of what's going on.
Any questions for Heidi, so we can move on?
None for me.
I'll move to approve retained services from Northland Securities to act as placement agent for Mitchell County.
Your motion is our second.
My second.
Our second. Any other discussion? Couldn't John Danos have done the whole thing that Landscap done?
He could have done, I believe he could have, yes. He's more expensive than, than they are, and he's, Landscap is, I won't say more user-friendly, but they attend meetings, they don't, they're not from Des Moines, but, but again, that's what was chosen to be done, and that's what we did.
The conversation we had with John Danos, wasn't he going to do the whole thing for $4,000?
$4,000 plan fee, he could have done it for.
And I asked him the same question, and he said that it would be a ballpark of $15,000.
So, so I don't know where you got your $4,000, that might be a base fee, but he, he was not, he would not do everything that was done for $4,000, in no way. There was a lot of parcels added, there was a lot of work done for what we are giving.
Is that what he told us?
That's what he told us, yeah.
I asked him the same thing. I said, one of the other board supervisors said you would do this whole thing for $4,000. And he said, no. Yeah, he said, then should give me a ballpark number. He said, the most expensive would be $15,000.
So his most expensive would be 15, we've already got 13 and 15 in Landscap?
No. I think that was only 11.
I believe it was 11, so.
Plus, we already paid him, so.
Plus, the 36 we already paid.
Doesn't matter, we're down 10, so.
Doesn't matter. So we paid $15,000, Landscap, and we got to pay John Danos another $15,000.
No, we're not paying him.
Yeah.
So, yeah, at this point is, you know, you're looking at the financial piece. When you, when you retain an attorney for an urban renewal plan, and then if you subsequently retain them for a financing piece, those are typically looked at as two different, two different pieces of the, of the puzzle.
So what are your fees?
The fees will be based off a percentage of whether, based off of the recommendation. What I'm going to be doing is taking a look at, from an internal standpoint, how much you can do from an internal loan standpoint. And then the remainder of that approximate $4 million, if that has to be borrowed, will be based off a percentage of that. I, you know, since I don't know exactly how much that is, I, I won't be doing anything more than 2%. But since that could range from $500,000 to $4 million, I don't have that percentage yet. It's a higher percentage, the lower that you borrow, lower percentage, the higher that you borrow, but won't exceed 2%.
So we got $15,000, or excuse me, $15 from Landscap, $15 from John Danos, and an unknown.
Sounds like a lot.
How long we could have done these local option?
Do any of this, yeah.
Any other discussion?
We got $2 million local projects. We would need all that with local option. Local option seems to have a lot of money in it compared to what, I mean, we're doing bridges, we're doing road projects, we're doing, we're doing a lot of stuff with local option when there's about $975,000 in it that's available. Seems to me that that fund is really growing a lot for what the, what the board is doing.
I, I will note that any financing fees would be combined into the financing and then repaid by the, repaid by the TIF revenues that are coming in.
And that's also what Landscap Partners has said.
Everybody acts like TIF revenue is free money, it's taxpayer money, is what it is. Goes into the treasurer's office, just like mine and yours does, but wasn't going to pay debt, so.
Yet 75 people signed that petition against it.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a lot more. At least if it go out for a vote, unvalid, I'm sure it would fail. Just based on what I've heard from taxpayers.
Motion second, any other discussion? Local.
Mike?
No.
Jim?
Hi.
Sidney? Todd?
Hi.
Mark?
No. Motion passes. Discussion on possible action on property.
We have the Kemp Art property that's going to be, we give them four months to clean things up. Not sure if it's going to be done or not, and after that, it's our responsibility. So this does not have to be approved today, but it's just, or if you want to, you certainly can, but put together a full form in regards to submitting to contractors so that everybody is going to submit a price based on a uniform, uniform plan to remove the property. So basically, there's three items, demolition and removal, level and shape the property, and then seeding and mulching. So when, whatever is left, the whole thing gets removed, the ground is prepped, it's seeded, and it's, it looks nice. My concern is that we have somebody come in and they just do half the job, do this, maybe don't do this, leave us with some stuff still on the ground. I want, I want it completely done, so this would, would do that.
I agree with some of the things, but I think it's a little, I don't know. I don't think we need to be seeded and mulched. I mean, we have the stuff in-house to do that. Why would you want to pay somebody to do that? And we got a big pile of dirt at the, out at the county home, so the dirt is free, just be some trucking. We have a grass seeder available, so I, I don't know why the finish work couldn't be done in-house instead of paying somebody to do it.
Yeah, that's fine. This, this is an idea, so.
Yeah, it's an idea, but I just didn't scratch them last.
This is, that is fine. This is an idea. If you have something else you want to put together, that's totally fine.
I agree, well, except for number three, all the three, the four threes on the end. I don't think it needs to be seeded and mulched.
Just going to leave it as dirt for the neighbors?
No, I just said that county has the equipment to, it could be done in-house. To save some money, you know? I'm, we're saving money, you know, I mean, we're looking for practical ways to do things.
So you, you mean have Rich's guys do it?
No, well, I mean, Rich, if they needed a load of dirt, you guys could haul a load of dirt out there, I would think. Typically, anything, we get blurry lines here with secondary road fund and what we do. We're more than willing to help do things, but remember, secondary road fund is specifically for the right of way. Anything we do outside the right of way is reimbursed in secondary road fund, so just keep that in mind. I mean, we, we, we get blurry lines here sometimes, but yeah, we've got the equipment, we can do it, but legally, we should, we should be billing that back to projects, so if we use our trucks to haul dirt off of the, off of our right of way to do something, we're going to bill it back, our labor, our equipment, and all that stuff, because that's how the secondary road fund works, because all, all of our money's spent on the secondary. Just, I want to keep that clear because I think a lot of times, and I'm not saying we wouldn't do it, I mean, we can certainly have one, but we got to keep that line a little bit more clear than, than what. We've got the equipment, yeah. And I know we built the building over here on the county property, and you guys haul rock and whatever, yeah. I mean, it's county land, you know? That, but secondary road fund is specifically for secondary roads and not anything outside that right of way. Now, I'm not saying we haven't, we won't do it, or I just, I just want to make that, because we get volunteer a lot or something outside the right of way, and we've got the equipment, which makes sense. But I want to make sure that we keep a clear line as to what the duties are with that fund in general. Now. You can do it in-house cheaper than hiring it out. I understand that, yeah, I just want to make, make the. Conservation has a seeder too. Pardon? Conservation has a grass seeder too, I mean, how long is it going to take to seed that? What is it, a quarter acre, maybe? I don't know. I don't know. Just trying to look for practical ideas.
Clear that up a little bit.
Yep.
Guess my only question is for payment, there's nothing on there for, so many bids on this, when do they get paid? 30 days, 60 days, or?
I, I guess I didn't put that on there, no.
And then who has, does the board go ahead and say it's done or not done, or?
Supervisor?
No.
Says what?
It has our email there.
Yeah, doesn't have, who's going to, who'll look the project over to make sure it's done or not done, or have done, or?
Well, I guess we'll have to table this and make some corrections.
And then? I guess, if I bid on this, I'm going to say, well, I mean, if the contractor bids on, they're going to say, like, paid when, or when it's done, or? That would be my only suggestion.
Yeah, we can, we can put on here something to the effect of, based on substantial completion, payment will be made within 30 days of substantial completion, something like that. In regards to inspection of the project, that, that's more or less between us, it's not, the contractor could care less if we're looking at the project, then it would be us to decide to do that.
Somebody's going to have to pay it.
Yeah.
It's done.
Yeah.
And has somebody bid on one, two, or three, or?
No, to be the whole thing. The decision, let's see, it says something on here, co-considered approval based on total, but they have to, they have to do it. It's based on the total of everything.
When do we take possession? Is it June?
June.
25th? 25th. I think, you know, maybe we should give people a little more time to look at it, too, June 25th to July 1st. Yeah, we can, not many days, you know, because.
Well, he's got a month and nothing's moved.
Well, I know, but he can move it all in those three days, you know, or a majority of it.
I'm disinterested.
You know, rather than.
Nothing moved yet.
Maybe we need to gather, this is just something.
I agree with you. Yeah. But maybe we should expand that a little bit, because what if somebody's on vacation for a week and they can't, you know? I agree, you should go out to.
Two weeks for a bid?
You know, it's been around many years. Give them two weeks' time to look it over, because it's hard to tell, you know, what's going to be left.
And there's a good comment in the chat, says a bidder can subcontract the other pieces, but needs to bid the project as a whole. So somebody out there could bid the project and not have anything to do with it, and just subcontract everything out, but it's, they're the, they're the prime, it's their responsibility to do the, yeah, make sure it all happens, so.
At this point, I, I really don't think anybody can be on that property, can they? I mean, they, all they can do is drive by and take a look.
Right, they should, yeah, we don't.
I don't think anybody can go on that property until we actually have possession. I mean, we can see, because that does go back to the north a ways, and I don't know.
And I don't know how far north it goes.
Well, our property, but get to the stuff, so it's a fine line.
Like the last time it got cleaned up, how did it get cleaned up?
Secondary.
Secondary roads did it? Did he or somebody else came in and?
I thought Paul did it.
Casey.
Jason. The one that, the one that told us. Okay.
Absolutely clean, spent weeks up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's true.
That was a mess.
Yeah.
Then he moved to Mitchell, and that's a nice story. So we've done it before, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Don't want to get into habit of it.
So we want to just let this rest. Yeah, just want to get some ideas, put some ideas together.
Well, set fiscal year '24 budget amendment. Looks like we've got June 3rd, 2024, 9:00 AM for a budget amendment, mostly for juvenile detention bill, I think, too.
Oh, yes.
That was. Don't know when they're going to come and.
Hard to control that.
Yeah, no, that's unpredictable department, of course. We don't know when kids are going to go to juvenile detention and when those bills are going to come in, or how long they're going to be there, so the last claims I just turned in, the $9,000, two bills that totaled over $9,000. The one bill was from Eldora, so Central Iowa Detention Center. But the juvenile court officer did contact me to tell me he was moving the child to Waterloo, to North Iowa Juvenile Detention Center, because they were upping up the rate in Eldora, so a bit higher at North Iowa Juvenile Detention, but it will be lower than what it was going to be moved to. So we never know when they're discharged from the detention center, so we are trying to amend the budget anticipating that the juvenile won't remain there. Thank you.
Glad he's working with that merger to, to, that's very good.
Yeah, because right on top of it. I think the day he was notified, he contacted me to let me know his plans, so. He's definitely looking out for the county.
At Central Iowa, the more trouble they get in, the more they charge, you know? Hard to do business, I guess.
Do you need a motion?
For June 3rd, 2024, 9:00 AM.
A motion?
Some.
Motion is our second.
Our second. Two seconds? Any other discussion?
And then, I believe, just to make sure everybody know that's on a Monday, not our Tuesday meeting.
Because election, so.
Is he? Thank you for that, Mark.
Local.
All right, local, Mark?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
Cash? All right, Jim?
Hi.
Sidney, hi.
CO2 pipeline local constituents.
Morning.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak again to you. I'm grateful to address you as our elected representatives and to share the concerns that many of us in this community have. Following my remarks, Margaret and Lisa will further add to our discussion of the community concerns. My name is Deb Rusted Freeman, and I reside in Otrano Township, Section 22, a place my family has proudly called home on the same homestead since 1854. For 170 years, we have maintained this land. Today, my home is threatened, positioned nearly 600 feet from the proposed pipeline route. My ancestors safeguarded our natural spring-fed creek, ate fish from the creek, and preserved the surrounding woodlands while caring for the land and tending to dairy cows. My son and I are committed to continuing this legacy through woodland restoration projects and have collaborated with Mitchell County Conservation on a CRP land initiative focused on water protection. The preservation of our land, groundwater, and homes in the Otrano and Mona area is of paramount importance to me. It is not just about the environment, but also about the safety and the well-being of our families, neighbors, and children living alongside the pipeline route. We have attended numerous meetings here, we've provided information, and have pleaded for assistance to protect the western side of Mitchell County from the risks associated with the hazardous pipeline. Recent developments have revealed that these concerns extend across the entire county, particularly regarding proposed water extractions. We have brought forth ordinance examples from other counties and implore you to enact similar protective measures. In support of this cause, we have gathered 60 signatures from concerned citizens urging our elected board of supervisors to implement necessary safety regulations. Our efforts have included organizing educational meetings, distributing emails loaded with resources, and we have talked to the landowners along the pipeline's proposed path. The feedback has been overwhelmingly in favor of immediate action to mitigate the risks imposed to our homes, water, and land. We have now amassed nearly 240 signatures endorsing the need for local government protection, asking for setback distances. I brought along the petition signed, and I'll just read the statement that they were signing when we gave them the petition. We want the county to adopt a planning and zoning, zoning ordinance to address these concerns. "We want the county to adopt a planning and zoning ordinance to address these concerns." "We, the undersigned, want Mitchell County supervisors to adopt an ordinance that will protect our homes, land, livelihoods, and quality of life. A hazardous pipeline ordinance benefits the people of this county. Please adopt a hazardous pipeline ordinance." So, petitions are in here. And also in the back of, I know you had concerns about being sued, which other counties have been sued, we're aware of that. Dickinson County proposed their pipeline ordinance, and that's in the back of your packet behind the signature pages. And so they have the same concerns you did. They sort of felt they found a way around it. And so Dickinson County faced similar challenges and responded by implementing an ordinance to establish buffer zones around homes, businesses, environmental areas, and parks, enhancing safety for their residents. "We urge you as our board to make a motion and an ordinance for establishing setback distances from hazardous CO2 pipelines. Will you take this step towards safeguarding our community?"
I think it's a good idea.
I do, too. I think we have to get Amanda, get her planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning meetings is given ordinance.
So, do you make that a motion, or how do you start that?
Uh, we have to start talking with Amanda, and she'd have to get her planning and zoning.
Amanda Bear that.
Yeah.
There's no motion on our agenda, so we cannot make a motion today? Because that's not on the agenda.
So, we, so how does that get on the agenda?
It could go on here next week.
Pardon?
It could be on there next week.
Okay.
And we can talk to Amanda in the meantime.
Okay, and additionally, it's critical to address existing ordinances concerning hazardous materials. Your Mitchell County Ordinance number eleven, which currently does not encompass supercritical hazardous CO2, so requires some review and possible revision to include that language for the hazardous materials. And the other ordinance concerning encasements under road crossings, I reviewed ordinances five, thirty-six, and forty-four, all of which pertain to road safety. But I didn't find any wording about encasements of pipes under those road crossings, which I know Betty McCarthy talked about one time at a meeting. So, I didn't know if that was something that, didn't you know?
You gotta be careful with encasements and what materials go through there, because if you do end up with a case pipe under the road, sometimes those encasements can leak, you know, whole water. It'll do more harm than good, so.
I, yeah, and I don't know the supercritical nature of this product. I'm not sure that that's, or how you know.
And if they're using, using steel pipe.
The steel pipe is only point-two inches thick. So, it seems like a very thin pipe for something that's supposed to last forever. I don't know if they, if they plan us to replace them every five years.
I don't know what the pipe is either. I'm assuming it's got a coating on it, but what, I, I don't know what they're using.
Okay, well, I, I.
I know that, I know that in the past, encasements can sometimes do more harm than good.
Anyway, that was just another thing that was brought up.
Mark and I attended that summit meeting. Didn't they say they were using a thicker pipe under the roads, or what were they doing there?
Yeah.
The only thing that that Kaylee ever mentioned was point-two, and I specifically asked her about the thickness of the pipe.
I thought it was rivers and roads, it was gonna be thicker, or, did I?
I don't miss Kaylee, um.
She is Kayla Langrell.
That guy was with her. He didn't really know the thickness, so he didn't, but he's a.
Yeah, so I've never heard her say any, I mean, I've listened to several different meetings when she presented it, and she hasn't said anything different than that. So, I invite any questions you may have. I want to remind you that you're not in this alone in this process. Other counties and their legal advisors are ready to assist, and we remain committed to supporting you and our community with necessary information and resources. Thank you once again for your attention and for considering these vital issues that impact all of us in Mitchell County. Margaret?
Yeah, I just got one thing that, you know, I've said this before in the meetings, and that this does need to go to state level, you know? Like, I U, I U B board will be making that decision. I just want you guys to be contacting our legislatures, too, you know, to make sure.
How many of you have contacted your legislators or, and the I U B? Have you guys contacted them?
Yeah, I've talked to a couple of them, and, but, and again, and I'm sitting in a position where I'm open-minded about it, yeah. You know, I've been listening to both sides, but.
What are the pros of, what side do you find on the pros? What lists, when you look at pros and cons of things?
Uh, our future.
Our future?
Sure.
If we don't have water?
Well.
If we have, you know, last year, if you listen to the Public Safety Trust, they presented to the United States Legislature last week, I may say. And he said that twenty-twenty-three was the worst year for pipeline accidents in the last three decades. And it was because they are, they're not properly maintained. So, there's a lot of safety risks.
And I, and I can be honest with you. I wasn't in favor many years ago with ethanol plants. I think a key thing there was water, water, water. And there's a lot of jobs out there, and they're producing a lot of fuel. And I'm not saying I'm a hundred percent still for them.
Yeah, they were, their original purpose was to reduce the amount of fossil fuels by replacing it with corn products, so that we reduce oil and fuel needs. But now that's not really happening. This product, this program that they're proposing, the pipeline, really doesn't do anything for the environment or the climate crisis. It's more.
It does take some out of the air.
Not as much as it's gonna use in drilling all these pipes. And, you know, all the things they have to, I mean, it's not gonna balance out very well.
And again, I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's, you know, what?
Pros and cons both ways, and.
If you look, the Pipeline Safety Trust is really a great resource. Pretty easy to find.
Yeah, you, you sent that to us.
Yep, I sent you a sample of that. And he spoke last week to the United States Congress, and that's where I got the information, that he said there was the most accidents last year of any pipeline year, so, okay. Any, any other questions?
So, Kaylee had it in the chat, and she's, she's online, but she's not going to be discussing because she's not on the agenda. But she just wanted to, like, she just wanted this to come through first. Pipe thickness ranges, it will be thicker under roads. All pipeline segments will be constructed with, constructed with high-strength carbon steel manufactured in the U.S. And have a wall thickness ranging from point-two-five inches, which is quarter inch thick, point-two-five inches to point-six-eight-eight inches thick. So, it's.
Okay, so that's not what she shared in the beginning, or at the meeting?
That's what she does here.
Okay, well, that's good to hear, actually.
She said steel's gonna be made in the United States?
Yeah.
Manufactured in the U.S.
Hi, I'm Margaret Meyer. I'm a Saint Anne's for resident. And I'm here as, thank you for having us on the agenda. I'm an affected landowner, concerned about public safety and water use, and also eminent domain. And I just wanna say that I think what we all, we all agree that if there were to be a pipeline, it would have to be built safely. And we would, it would have to be safe for the residents. And so I think with regard to the ordinance that you're gonna be thinking about, that would be the paramount concern, is, is doing it safely. But I'm actually here to talk about, not about the ordinance, but, but about doing an objection with the I U B, which poses no risk of any litigation whatsoever. I'm assuming that if you're willing to look at the, at the ordinance issue, that you wouldn't be opposed or unwilling to do, to doing an objection with the I U B? Perhaps about eminent domain, I mean, use of eminent domain for such a project? Overwhelmingly, the counties that are affected by the pipeline have objected with the I U B publicly stating that they don't approve the use of eminent domain for this project. Some have included other types of objections, but overwhelmingly, the, the counties in, in Iowa that have, that have been affected, whether directly or feel they are affected by a neighboring county, have, have objected. This would be a statement, a public statement, could be very simple, that you put landowner rights in Mitchell County first. So, that's what I'm here to ask you, if you'll be willing to do. Is that something that you feel like you could do?
Yes.
I'll go into it with an open mind.
Sidney? Do you feel like you could object to use of eminent domain for a project like this? Been nodding, hey, Jim?
I work for both sides of this. And so what about, what about the, the corn industry in Mitchell County that actually do want a better avenue for their corn?
At the farm, so.
And I also get it that there's a lot of people that don't want this. There are two sides to this. I, I hear the negative side to this, as far as not wanting it the most. And, and that's okay, if people don't want something. But there are other people that do want this.
Mm-hmm.
I don't hear from them that much, I'll, I'll admit that. But I know there are, they are out there. And my contention has always been, if the landowner does not want this on their ground, don't sign the easement. This, as Todd said, this is going through the I U B, and the code specifically takes us out of this. Unfortunately, it does. If you don't want it, don't sign it. If, the best thing that could have happened to stop this is if every landlord in the state of Iowa did not sign an easement. Because what's I U B gonna do then? Do eminent domain on the whole state of Iowa? I doubt that very much.
That's the concern.
I doubt that they would do that very, I doubt that they would do eminent domain on every parcel in the state of Iowa. It just, so, if you don't want it, don't sign it. I don't know, I can't, that's, that's my point.
So, you agree that you don't want eminent domain being used?
No, I don't, I don't agree. I want property rights. But the property rights are both sides.
The property rights mean no eminent domain.
The property, and the property rights also mean that if somebody wants this on their property to get easement, that they should be able to do that.
Yeah, for their own property.
For their own property. So, there's two sides to this. Property rights for, I want it, property rights for, I don't want it. And I don't, I don't agree with the eminent domain thing. I don't.
Okay, so the, the objection, the only, what we're asking for is an objection such as the O'Brien County objection, which states, "On behalf of the O'Brien County Board of Supervisors, I am registering our opposition to granting eminent domain for the Summit Carbon Solutions Carbon Capture Project that is proposed to be constructed through O'Brien County. The O'Brien County Board believes that each landowner should have the right to decide if they want the carbon pipelines on their property." So, that's exactly what the objection, what, what kind of objection we're asking.
Email that to the board, please.
I have one for each of you.
Oh.
So, let me just hand those out.
No, I, I do not remember, I don't, do not know where this went with the legislature. Somebody in this room might know this.
Yeah, they didn't, Waylon Brown didn't bring it up.
As far as the.
The Senate.
As far as possible action to.
Yeah, for eminent domain.
So, that didn't.
Yeah, it stopped at the House.
Okay, all right, I did not know that, so.
So, Waylon Brown didn't, I mean, had to sit up for it, was killed, basically.
That was, that started.
Did it twice.
That started at the Ways and Means Committee, though, so.
Yeah, two years ago, twice now that's happened.
But this year it started at the Ways and Means Committee.
Well, it was the House first, and then I make it, and then it's got stuff.
Okay.
Isn't that right up with Ways and Means?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Hello?
Yeah.
Hi, good morning. My name is Lisa Ritzer. I'm a Mitchell County landowner. And thank you for the public voices here today, in person and in representation. If carbon dioxide pipelines are to pass through Mitchell County soil, across streams and farms, right up next to Mitchell County homes, families, and children, and stifle public water supplies, residents deserve the very best community and natural resource protections. Bill Karim, Executive Director of the Pipeline Safety Trust, notes that right now, CO2 pipelines are relatively rare, and with the nation rapidly moving towards building a lot more CO2 pipelines closer to communities, we're not ready to do that safely. The CO2 pipeline industry is underregulated and inadequate for new and massive CO2 projects, especially in close proximity to people. The federal government is just now in an unfinished CO2 pipeline rulemaking process. The state of Iowa has courted the CO2 industry to the state. For three years, however, the state of Iowa has established no legislative or agency regulatory measures in preparation for this nascent industry. No public protections, nothing. In combination with lacking state measures, county governments are facing immense pipeline company opposition while trying to fill the gaps with federally recognized citing authority. The Board of Supervisors was provided a county board suggestion checklist and a two-hundred-nine-page federal guidebook on pipeline land use planning called the PIPA Report. We encourage the board to reach out and communicate with other counties and to participate in the I U B hearings and dockets process. We offer our continued support and energies working together to achieve the best for Mitchell County. I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for their service as representatives of the people of Mitchell County. I'd like to thank, too, the many community members who are working together in educating their neighbors and having their voices heard. I agree with the National Democratic Institute and intra-parliamentary union that a vital and guiding principle of democratic governance is that everyone who is affected by a decision has a right to be involved in the decision-making process. The right to participate in decisions that affect public welfare is a cornerstone of democracy for which I am grateful. We look forward to the follow-up on an objection and ordinance spoken of here today and further discussion on this public priority. Thank you.
Any other local people wanna talk about the pipeline?
Anybody else?
I would, I would like to suggest that maybe put on agenda next week to send the Iowa utility boards about the eminent domain, like maybe somewhere in O'Brien County, which is pretty simple and to the point. Nice suggestions, and we can approve that. But it has to be on the agenda for us to do a motion like that. Very soon, yeah. Yep, so.
Lindsay, wanna?
Thank you.
Yeah, Lindsay, you wanna add that to the agenda for next week? Discussion and action on sending the, the Iowa utility board for, for the Summit Carbon Solutions eminent domain? Like, that's in line, you know? And the landowners have their choice, like.
Yeah, they still have their choice, it's just that they can't force you to take it.
Correct, yeah. Windmill's their same deal. Some people want them, some people don't, you know? Which is not as hazardous as this would be, so.
So, if you'll be voting on that, should we just come back next Tuesday?
Well, if, if you'd like, it's open meetings. Yeah, we'll talk about this and decide.
Or you can call us.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, open meeting, you can come every week, you know? But, yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay.
I think that's a good idea to.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll talk to Amanda about getting an ordinance in place of the planning and zoning, so. Because they develop it and they bring it here for approval, so. Since other counties, is it?
It started, it took a while to get the windmill ordinance.
Yeah.
Still, still not approved yet.
Not approved, yeah, yeah. County attorney's looking at the windmill ordinance, yeah. But they developed it, so.
Could you also put on the agenda for next week this statement, the eminent domain statement? Just a, you know, voting on a statement as well? If it sounds like the, having ordinance would be taking a while?
Yeah, the ordinance would take a while, but, yeah, that's what I wanted on the agenda, the, the statement that we can send the Iowa utility board to.
Yeah, place, place on the agenda discussion and possible action on consideration of eminent domain statement. Yeah, place on the agenda discussion and possible action on consideration of eminent domain statement to the I U B board.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. That'll be awesome.
Keep a better word still for that, dude. Idea.
Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion on pipeline? Okay. Items of note being attended.
Wait, I do, I haven't. Um, so when, when a ordinance is put into place, it can always be modified or rescinded or changed, but the, getting it into place prior to forwarding of the pipeline activities is essential. Because once a pipeline is, is permitted on that section, then it's no longer an option. So, um, yeah, I'm glad to hear that we are gonna be looking at, into that and, um, learning more. But just to know that we, you know, there can always be modifications and changes and rescinded later if that, that's something that comes up. But it's important to get something in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Items of note being attended.
At a NiACOG meeting last night, and the big thing that they were looking at is, uh, enterprise, enterprise rents out cars and commuter services. Anyway, so there, they did a presentation as far as a van pool, meaning that enterprise would furnish a van and a minimum of four riders. They market this themselves and we'll just pick Winnebago Industries. You can pick any industry that you want. So what it would be is enterprise reaches out to Winnebago, says, "Do you have a need for people that carpool to your, your industry?" And Winnebago says, "Yeah, we do have a large number of people from out of town to come here." So enterprise would furnish a van, want a minimum of four riders. They charge a monthly fee to do that. The, then the, which is more than what the people in the van actually have to pay. The amount that the people in the van have to pay, they divide up based on the number of riders in there. And then NiACOG subsidizes that other amount. But then within a timeline, the federal and state government reimburses NiACOG for the services as far as that gap that the funding is at. Because federal government, state government consider that we have less traffic on the roads, less road damage, less carbon emissions, less pollution, saving fuel, all positives of doing this. So they feel a need that they can reimburse to do this. So it's, uh, it's something that NiACOG's considered not doing. And it's not just for Winnebago, it'd be for, uh, people that are in Osage that drive to a place in Mason or Shaw City or wherever. So looking into that. It was kind of a, it's kind of a neat thing. So that was the big thing I had. That's all.
Do they provide a driver too then, or?
No. So what it is, is that, let's just say the, the five of us are carpooling, we're, we're working somewhere and we do the carpool thing. This is my week to drive. I drive it. I take the van home at the end of the day, or I park it, uh, at a parking lot or whatever, but I drive for the week. Next week, Sidney drives. She takes Skarbet for the week. And then enterprise monitors the vehicle. They pay the insurance on it. The fuel ends up being, the, the five of us have to pay for the fuel, but then that's just added to the monthly cost of each of us that we have to pay when we're already going to use the van. And then, uh, I think I said they insure it. They service it as far as if it needs to be serviced, send a notice, notification out to the, the drivers. Everybody, all the drivers can know what's going on. Van needs to be serviced, okay? A local place can service it and they can, while we're all working, that local place can come pick the van up, service it during the day, get it back so that we have it at the end of the day, so we can drive it home at the end of the day, so. Just had a lot of good positive things to it. So I have.
I had, uh, none, but I had, I forgot for earlier, but I had, we had a letter in the mail from Carpenter wanting a donation. Can you reach out to, remember the, that letter that we had?
I saw it yesterday. Yeah, I saw it yesterday and it has to do with the event that you want to do in Carpenter, which is great, but it, it has to get on the agenda.
Yeah.
So it needs to be on the agenda. It's, it's in our mail slot.
Brent, or? Anyways, just a.
Community club.
Yeah, it's community club, but it, it's in our mail slot. Needs to be put on the agenda for consideration.
Yeah, and we need a, a mount for, anyway, that's why I have.
I, I didn't have a meeting.
We had a Heartland Insurance meeting. They talked about township cemeteries. If somebody falls and breaks a leg, who's liable for that? Township cemeteries don't have money and so probably gonna come back on the county, so we're gonna look into that. 10-hour ultra-training coming up. Somebody wants to go to that. Judy's coming today later for insurance, uh, meetings.
Do you have a date with that ocean?
It's summer sometime. They don't have a date yet, but it's gonna be mid-summer. That's it.
Mark, I just said, so related to the, the Heartland meeting, it says it's at 10 o'clock. Are we going to just adjourn the meeting after that? So it's all encompassed in one meeting or what?
Uh, it's a good question. I see it's adjourned this meeting and then I'll, I'll open it up.
Well, I, I know on the, on the guide she has it as far as we adjourn the meeting, but that's where I was wondering if we just encompass it just in this meeting and.
Probably could. Was it, I don't know, hopefully it was both. She got all the rate over there posted, I know.
It's on the agenda, so.
Well, we'll just keep it running till, uh, Judy's not.
I think that would be good.
That's it. And I had no meetings.
All right. Public comments. Any public have a comment?
I have a question.
Question, yes.
My question was about, um, is there interest on internal loans if you use it for the TIF money?
I believe there is, but, uh, that's what we apparently hired this Northland for, to see if there is any money to borrow.
Well, and you need to divide it up. If you have so much money, but you don't have all of it, you can use some of it as internal and there would not be interest, or there's always gonna be interest.
No, you can divide it up, divide it up based on what the amount is available for internal loans. And the nice thing about internal loan is legally rather than paying, I'm just gonna pick a number, okay? $300,000. Just pick a number. So if we did a $300,000 internal loan from somewhere within our system, rather than paying interest, the turbine might actually pay interest back to that, to that funding source that we're borrowing from. So we would actually.
Kind of a benefit then?
Oh, it's a big benefit, yeah.
So internal loan is the best way to go?
The very best.
That was my question.
Any other public comment? Oh, adjourn meeting at 9:48.
So when we start the other one up?
Yeah.
Or do you want to cancel that?
Well, cancel it, adjourn.
Okay.
On your own.
Have a recess.
Recession. Ten o'clock, was it?
Yeah.
Recession, don't have a.
We're still like camera.
Correct.
They said a call from a. You gotta watch what we say.
Do you have access to the website out? So can you take this receipt? So it's still recording? So you don't have to just cut off?
Or the break.
Cut off the break and then just let it run? I think it goes to Rachel's email?
So anyways.
But you can hold up.
Yeah, I think I got. Oh, sure, sure.
Send it to yourself. If he can't get the recording from this computer, can you get into Rachel's email? And says, can he? Thank you.
He will five or six cases of legislation in the Senate, in the Senate would have clarified.
Yeah, it's gonna be recorded again.
But it's in Congress. Sit, sit, right. Dennis Gunn said, "For session began before the gamble, Waylon made a statement to the caucus. No eminent domain legislation will come through the Congress, period." They tried to make a way to leave. Yeah, so they create that, what are we gonna do? So we don't want to, we want. But you shouldn't create a, hurt, you should have a, it doesn't have a, it doesn't have all the science and break their. Yeah.
For, for.
Rhino.
For, for.
Yeah, yeah. One of the. All they know is when you. And people that have a lot of money have the time to go and create doctors. Yeah, I know. Where they can make. I mean, that's, that's. Then maybe doesn't have a certain background, get a full size of the. I mean, science is my thing, so, you know, I, I know science. I, I, I created typos in.
Time to go.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yeah. So one of the things that I. Somebody doesn't have. You know, and I've been.
Hi there.
Hi, how are you? Nice to meet you. You apparently.
Forty-one years. That's fine.
See you. Take care.
Chris, you wanna pull seat up here?
No, you're fine. We're, uh, complement the safety.
She's not here yet, so.
Oh, I think she's out.
Is she?
Is that her up there?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
You guys ready?
Yep, come on up.
All right. So I think we met you all last year, so you're familiar. I'm Julie Ham, I'm from, this is Mary Griffin with Holmes Murphy. So I'm just gonna go over, um, just a little background as far as, um, what we've done. There had not been, um, a rate study or any rate changes for Heartland for at least fifteen years. Um, and so Heartland, the pool was absorbing all the costs of the reinsurance. Those were not, that was not being distributed out to the counties. The, the additional costs due to, um, to the reinsurance. So last year, the Heartland Board decided and approved to do a rate study to make sure. Because again, like those rates hadn't been adjusted in, for at least fifteen years. And I'm not sure when the last rate study was done. So we did have a rate study done by actual ARL associates. Um, we had recommendations from them. And the Heartland Board adopted those proposed rate adjustments. And so, um, for this policy year, so to see any difference, and Mary can kind of go over that. But I wanted to let you know that was a Heartland action, um, based on the fact that nothing had been done for, you know, over fifteen years. And they were absorbing those costs, so. And Mary can just go and go through this.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so I just wanted to clarify that, that the, the board hadn't changed the county rates. But the pool and the reinsurance rates have continued to go up, especially in the property area. Um, as everybody is seeing, whether it's any type of industry or homeowners or, or whatever. The, um, property premiums have gone up. So the pool was absorbing all of those increases. And it was starting to impact the, um, the surplus. So the board, that's what they made the decision that, okay, we need to make some adjustments to the counties for the, the health of the pool. So you'll notice that there is a, a, a large increase in the property premium and inland marine primarily. Um, those rates are, that's the one that had probably the most impact with the, the rate study and the rate change that they, that they made. Um, some of the other areas, um, with the rates. They took, took a look at the liability rates. Um, all the counties had different rates, but there wasn't a, a good reason that they could figure out why that had happened many years ago. Um, so they, they did take a look at all the, the liability rates. Um, your rates actually, um, in some of the areas in the liability went down. Um, not a lot, but they did, the liability rates did go down a little bit. So what you're seeing in your increase in your liabilities, um, some of that is due to the expenditures that, that came about. Some of, I should say, some of those went up, some of them went down. Sorry, I misspoke. It was your auto that rates that went down, not your general liability. So yours was on the lower side of the liability compared to the other counties. So as you're looking at it, we do have a very, a, a pretty big increase in your premium this year. Um, primarily due to those rate changes that the pool elected. Some of them have to do with your exposure changes, your property values, as well as your expenditures.
Because we had to see biz or see we came and reevaluate our property and five of them weren't even insured. So we were.
At a.
Lot of them were under, we were insured, so we're trying to catch it up.
Right, exactly.
And that, and that's the other thing too, for, you know, many number of years. Don't know that those, that wasn't looked at. You know, I think it was put out, make sure your property values are where they should be. Um, but then last year and this year, they've been getting their property values where they need to be to make sure you're fully insured in case you do have a loss.
And our vehicles, we re, I gave the sheriff and the conservation and Rich our vehicle stuff. And I know the sheriff and Rich did theirs, did the conservation, if we get their vehicles.
Sure do. But the ones we have.
The ones I gave you to check them out. Because those two dump trucks are still insured for fifty-eight thousand dollars.
So we had that lower. The email we sent back off was, they don't need to be at that rate.
And we can look at the schedules and, and we, and you can review that schedule and make sure that that's on there.
What's on for fifty-six?
So you're saying the dump.
Is that the eighty-seven Fords?
Yeah, yeah.
And so what are those supposed to be on there for then?
Well, they're dump trucks, but they ain't worth fifty-six thousand dollars.
Is that the replacement cost of them?
That's what we're. That's what we bought a new for.
That's what you bought a new for, okay.
They've never been lowered.
I don't know if you'd ever want replacement costs of those, I mean, they're just.
So what, so what would you do then if something hap, if something happens? Okay, and then would you?
I can't speak for your.
No, we were talking, they're, they're, they were left hand over, you probably have to buy a replacement. Yeah, we have to buy replacements.
So you would want something.
Well, that would, they would, so they would, if something were to happen to them, if they were to be totaled, they would get actual cash value. But typically, an auto, they always ask what the cost new is, and then they determine it based on the age. But I'm thinking, I mean, fifty-six thousand, you're gonna get a new one for fifty-six thousand. Is that the actual cash value? Should it be totaled? Is that what it costs to replace it with a light kind of quality?
Oh, I don't even, I, light kind of quality, like.
Eight thousand dollars would be.
Probably. It, to replace, to replace it in kind, it wouldn't be fifty-eight thousand dollars, but. It'd be a lot cheaper than that. Probably less than ten.
Yeah.
For what they are. But would you? The thing is, is do you want something?
Yeah, do you?
You want something better than.
I'm gonna go back to the eighty-seven.
We do.
Yeah. So let me, let me talk to the underwriter and see, um, what they're willing to do on those two, given that back, but.
And there's probably more on there that.
Yeah, so I'll leave these schedules with you guys. Um, we have until the end of May to make any changes to the schedules. Um, so I will leave these with somebody and you guys can take a look or we can send out an updated electronic copy. What would you prefer?
Whatever Mike wants, because I know.
Give you a card afterwards.
Okay, perfect, perfect, okay, we'll do that.
Engineer done, redone theirs.
We didn't know what to put in there for, you know, if we lose a motor grader. Don't you, if they're only gonna give us, if, if we have a motor grader and get totaled, I don't know how that could, and, you know, what would, the value we have in there, I think. The values we have in those schedules, what, what, what do those values actually mean? What we're gonna get back or what they're, you know?
Well, what's the MLC read for physical damage? Because you guys insure those within the pool, not the insurance carrier.
We buy a fifty thousand dollar motor grader that's used and to replace it, you're never gonna find another one for that kind of money for the same. So I think.
I know what you're saying.
I work with the schedule in my annual report with the DOT and all they ever wanted was our purchase price. And so that may have gotten put in a whole schedule thing a little bit with the insurance. And I think when we get a new vehicle, we give the cost to the, to you guys. And we figure from there on, the depreciation is kind of considered in the, each year as the equipment gets older, that. I always assume the number you're changing by you guys because that's what the values are when we purchase them and then there's ways to appreciate.
So what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna pull what's called the memorandum of coverage, which is basically the pool policy. Pull that language for physical damage. And I will let you know if that vehicle is damaged, how that's adjudicated and what you would expect, so that you know. I'll pull that language and when I send you the schedules, I'll, I'll give you that information.
That'll be good.
Okay, perfect.
But all that rich is that old excavator is still on there, we're painting on that, then we trade it in.
Yeah, I don't know why, we always kind of cycle through when we kind of, when we get something new, we call insurance right away and just trade it off. Drive while we make her get to take it all better. I know even in my annual report, when I do my annual reports and report, I take it off. Your software either does or doesn't, so.
The other change that the board, um, has approved, and you guys should see some difference in this. Um, typically in the past, and I, I'm assuming this has been since the inception of the pool. I've only been off, this is only my second year, um, as your broker. The, there were a few things that were audited. So your payroll was one of those things was, that was audited. So you either paid more or got money back if your payroll was up or down. And they hadn't done it with things like the autos or your, um, inland marine. So that's one thing that they have voted to change. So like last year, you started the year at four million eight hundred and sixty-two in values for your inland marine. And this year, you're starting it at four million two eighteen. So that difference at the end of the policy period, they will audit that out. And then you will receive premium back because you, there's no reason to be paying premium based on stuff that you got rid of during the year. Same thing with autos. If you had changed you, um, last year, if, you wouldn't have seen that, but if there is no change. So you were either getting premium that you, paying premium that you shouldn't have been or getting premium back that you shouldn't have. So we're going to be doing audits to be more beneficial. So you're not paying more premium than you need to or not as much premium as you should be. So that should be, this year you should see an audit return on your inland marine values based on your inception to inception values. So that is, um, something the board just voted on this last. Any questions on any of this?
Um, this goes into effect July first, correct?
Correct.
So my main question is, this is about a hundred thousand dollar increase compared to what we had before. And I'm just, I don't remember. Did, did you project this to which county prior to us doing our budget? I mean, we, we approved a budget.
Yes.
And if we, if this is a hundred thousand dollar surprise.
No, no, we gave, we gave budget, we gave budget projections early in the year.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I don't remember what those numbers were, but I just, I just want to make sure this was, isn't a giant surprise for the budget, so.
No, it should not be. No, these are all, and as a matter of fact, what we're gonna do, um, the way it had always been done in the past is those numbers were given out in January. Um, like the pre-renewal, what we anticipated. Now, in, in talking with the counties as a whole, um, what I've heard and, and we can, it, it's much more beneficial to get those numbers maybe at the end of November, first of December. And so that's what we're gonna do going forward. It had always been prior to me being the administrator, it had always been done in January. But as we talked with the counties, talked with the board, it's like, really, if we could get those numbers, or, you know, earlier, it would be much better. So that's what we're gonna do going forward. We're gonna provide those numbers to the counties, like I said. And our, our December meeting is like December sixth. So it'll either be, you know, right at the end of November or at that December sixth meeting, we'll give those, um, to all the counties. So you'll have that, because that's what I'm hearing from budget, you know, figuring your, you need those sooner rather than later, so.
Very good.
So that's what we're, we're planning on. And then.
Were we talking about cyber?
Either, yeah, either, the only other thing is the cyber has been done differently, um, this year. And it kind of goes along with the rate. Um, previously, the pool was of the cyber premium, they were paying all of it, but twenty-five thousand. And then that twenty-five thousand was being split between the ten counties. And so now, how they're doing it, how the board elected to do it, is take half of the premium from the expiring premium, which was a hundred, around a hundred and sixty. So Heartland, uh, the pool paid eighty thousand of it. And then the other, the remaining eighty thousand split between the counties based on number of employees and shared allocation. So that's why you're seeing an increase in that, just because the board approved a different way of doing it. And that's how they will do it going forward. They will continue to use half of the, uh, half of the expiring will be paid by the pool and then the other half will be split between the counties. So that's where the difference in that is. So I want to add on to that. So we did go to, um, several markets to see, try to get some competitive votes. We do have one carrier who came in about thirty thousand less. However, they have a requirement that all counties have to have multi-factor authentication on their emails. Um, I don't have the list of, there's two that do have it, there's eight that don't. And I don't know, does, um, do you have multi-factor? Not yet. Um, so they had said that, um, if they write it as of July first, if the counties can agree to have it done within ninety days after that renewal date. That they will find coverage, um, at that reduced premium. Now, of course, we're also using that, you know, trying to negotiate with your current carrier to see if we can get them to come down. Um, but they, they're probably going to have that same requirement if they reduce their premium. Um, so that, we will be reaching out, um, and they have a county IT, they have their own IT person. So we'll talk with. So we'll, we'll talk individually to each of the counties to see if that's gonna be something that's possible, um, for each county. Any questions on, on that or anything else on here?
I just, on the, when you mentioned that return on the inland marine.
On the audit?
Yeah. When would we see that return? Um, like in June of next year, when the year is over?
No, so the, and it will go into your surplus, to the county surplus.
No, that's not.
Oh, no, that, no, that's the, sorry, that's, that's the.
No, so this, this won't, this audit won't be done until.
It'll be done after the expiration. Usually they're done thirty to ninety days.
So we always audit the work comp and the payroll. And so that, that, and we'll do that in conjunction. And so then once that's done, I mean, well, the work comp and the property. So then if there was additional, it'll all just be lined up. You know, you owed additional for a property, but you've got to return on work comp, or however that plays out. Then either a, a check, so that'll be at, I think it's normally September that we have that all completed, the end, by the end of September.
So they elected to go ahead and do the audit effective, the expiration of the twenty-three, twenty-four year. So that goes into effect for the current policy year, not waiting until the next policy year.
So if there is something that we had to pay a little more, you, you would take that out of.
Yeah.
We did, and then.
Correct, yeah.
At the end, issue a return.
Or yes, or there might be, yes. So, and, and that's, that's what's been being done each year for the work comp and the property. We've been doing that, but now we're adding the inland marine and the autos. And so that'll be spelled out to, you know, this is the additional due or this is your return. And then it'll be, you know, in that figure here, so.
Okay, thank you.
And then the other thing, um, so there were no premium credit in the past year, there've been premium credits. Um, there were no premium credits this year. The board elected not to, um, have any premium credits, given the fact that we did do the rate study with the increase in rates. And then, so we can evaluate, they can evaluate what the surplus is next year and then look to see what are we gonna do as far as premium credits. And so that'll be something that the board will look at again next year. But just giving the changes, want to make sure that they're, they know where their surplus is, um, before making any credits and anything like that, so. And then the only other things, I have a couple other things. Um, loss control is Troy Schultz, I'm with Holmes Murphy. And has he been out here to do the, has he been out this year?
So, and he'll, he comes out and does a risk assessment. And so we, we have that. And that kind of go, goes in conjunction with our safety committees. Heartland is very request, required, safety committees this year establishing those for all the counties to just kind of assist with the loss control. So in addition to what Troy says for recommendations, or making your counties, whatever he sees that might need to be a safe, you know, a safety concern that needs to be addressed. And then we'll have the safety committees establish. So Troy did an OSHA ten-hour training. I don't think anyone from your county came, but it's very valuable. We, the OSHA ten-hour training, Holmes Murphy offered that free, free instruction to anyone, to all the counties. We had about twenty-six people attend from, from all the counties. And again, this kind of goes in conjunction with the safety. Troy was able to show during this training, he showed actual examples of counties, like these are things, I don't say these are things. And it was the, the people who attended from the other counties, when if you had a picture of this up and, and discussing the safety concern, they could see their own county. I mean, it was, it was very beneficial. So Har, so Holmes Murphy is going to offer that again this year, if there's interest from the counties, that we will offer another, they will offer another training and they can do forty at a time. So as we're establishing these safety committees, I'll propose that. My recommendation would be that at least someone who's on the safety committee attend this training to kind of, just to help with this establishment of this safety committee and, and that all goes together, so. And then Troy did provide, he did do loss ratios. And so your one-year loss ratio for the work comp is ninety-three point eight-nine percent. And your three-year loss ratio is seventy-seven percent. And then for the property, your one-year loss ratio is seven point forty-seven. And that was prior to your most recent storm, so that, that won't go up. And then the property for the three years, seven, seventeen point five-eight percent. But those work comp loss ratios are, are high. And so that's just really the importance of establishing the safety committee. What, what are things, are there things we need to do about working safe, you know, lifting, you know? What, what's driving, you know, the work comp cost? So that, I think that will be beneficial for you to have the establishment of that safety committee. And then the other things with Heartland that we have, the harassment prevention training this year. The approved methods are the know before, which that's particular to Manhaska County. That's a program that they purchased, but they do a lot of their trainings off of that. So that is approved. The KPA system, which is provided by Holmes Murphy, there's harassment training on there. And then there also approved is Mula Cartnell, and she did that last year. So, and they will, that she's approved to do two trainings. So I know one training did work out for you last year, but if you would like the two trainings, that is approved. So we'll get, we'll start getting that coordinated. And then we will again have the employment practices seminar that we normally have in September. And that will be at the Tamaa County Nature Center. So we'll, I think we're going to have some good topics this year. Holmes Murphy has some changes in the workforce that they're going to present on. And then we'll have a safety and some cyber information at that training. And then the last training that we have, and this is new that we're establishing this year, is for newly elected and elected officials seminar that we're going to have. And that's going to be November fifteenth, and that will also be at the Tamaa County Nature Center. And we're, we want, you know, new elected officials to attend. And Brent Henders, who is the employment practices attorney for Heartland, he will be presenting on open meetings, closed, closed sessions, closed meetings and new law and some other things that the, that the board has requested that he present on to be beneficial for the elected officials. So we feel that that is a, especially with the changes with IPib, and he'll be talking about that and the fines and how those have changed. And so we really feel that this is a, a good seminar that we're offering and it's free of charge. So I did have someone ask that as far as, you know, newly elected, there's, there's no charge associated with this, so.
I was an individual sign up for that.
So we'll, I'll send something out on that. And so I'll, I'll have a sign up prior to, you know, prior to that getting established. I mean, we'll just kind of assume we'll have, you know, a, a good group from each county, but I will send that out to everyone, so.
Everyone, meaning the board or the auditor?
Auditor, typically if I send it to the auditor, then they can distribute that out to the elected officials. That's kind of how I've handled that in, in the past, so.
We will go over for, especially for the newly elected, we'll go over how the pool works. So that, yeah, so that if it's new to them, then they have a.
Right, yeah.
So that, that's, that's, will be November fifteenth?
Yes.
Okay, so like we have three for running, or three positions open. If perhaps someone knew, would that be the auditor's job to, because they won't take office until the first of the year, you know what I'm saying?
Right, yeah.
They can just sign up themselves, right? Do they have to have?
Somehow that.
They have to.
Just so that.
Are you asking how are they going to be notified?
Yeah, I guess that's what.
Just so we can have some communication, yeah, communication to them, yeah.
Yeah, she would do that.
Okay, yeah, that's.
All right, I think that's all, but we really felt like that was a, a good thing.
Will you be sending the OSHA training to the officials as well?
Yes, I certainly can, yeah.
Cause I didn't know about the last one.
Okay, yeah, no, I certainly, yeah, I will, yeah, so that, yeah, that'd be great if you went to attend.
I, I went to it, I, I really enjoyed it, so we would, the committee would pick somebody to go to them.
Yeah, yeah, Chris.
Do we have cybersecurity through your folks?
Yes. You mean, insurance? Yes.
Is that true or is this a new stuff? Or you just had a conference here last week? If we were to be attacked and, you know, worst case scenario or whatever, would our insurance provider drop us? We have to, okay. That's what.
What, what, see, when, when I've seen carriers drop an account is when the, no lessons were learned. How did they get in? Well, we're not going to make any changes. So it's more of, you know, they weren't willing to mitigate and make changes to their system to try to keep it from happening again. So that's the only time I've ever seen, I mean, I, I've had some ransom attacks, four million dollars plus, one on a public entity. And they still have the same carrier, they just increased their limits because they didn't have, they didn't have that high of limits at that time, so.
That was a hard topic.
Yeah.
Discussion.
I meant, I didn't place into what Mary was talking about with the MFA, with the multi-factor.
Cause that's where most of them are getting in, is through emails. Is they're getting smarter and smarter and it's not as easy to detect when it's a bad actor sending you something. So whether it's social engineering, where they're trying to get you to pay a bill that you shouldn't be paying. But the bigger and more intentional, those ransomware, they get in and they shut the system down and you have no access to anything within your, your system until they give it back to you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I had one question. Our current liability limit, do you feel that's sufficient for a county our size or what are most counties doing?
It's low, you're probably one of the lowest ones of the ten, five million. That, it's, I call that, I call that sweep insurance. Does it, I mean, how, when you go right now in front of a jury, five million is probably on the low side. If there was something that they felt that you were negligent about, they, the nuclear verdict, something that might have been a million or two million verdict five, ten years ago is now ten and a teen.
What, what did most counties carry for liability? Like a county this size or?
Seven, I think, you know, seven would probably be, we were, we were at Czechoslovakia yesterday, I think they have seven.
Somebody else had eight yesterday, they had, they had had eight.
Yeah, so.
I know, I kind of all just.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think.
In today's world.
So seven or eight, some of the, I think probably Benton and Cedar, they're a little bit bigger, they, they have ten. But the other ones.
Saying that, I was going to ask the same question, like, I remember sitting here in St. Seve last year. And I believe we were, like, were we four million? Was it last year we went up one?
Two years ago, I think.
Two years ago, and we were, we were saying the same thing, that we were on the lower. And I would, I would be willing to look at, so it's not such a big jump in one year as maybe now it's been two years to consider taking another jump.
Yeah.
I mean, I said, it's out there for discussions. Cause I know they, two years ago, we were one of the lower ones too.
So yeah, so then you can see down there what your cost, what the cost would be for that, so.
I don't know, I would suggest, my opinion.
So I guess that's probably something you guys probably have board action on to do. And then again, if, if that's something you do, do, if you get that to us prior to May thirty-first, then we could get that, just knowing then when you get your actual invoice for this, you know, it will be that additional amount. So if that's, you know, but just make sure you let us know.
Yeah.
If that's what you, if that's what you decide to do.
Do you guys like put it on a agenda for discussion?
I would. Sure.
Cause I mean, the thirty-first isn't too far.
Right, yeah.
Put that up for next week?
Yeah, sure can.
And then, and then the other thing that we're doing a little bit different this year, when we send this out, so like after May thirty-first, when everything's been finalized, we'll send out the authorization to bind through DocuSign. So we'll send that to the chairman, so. So you're the chairman too, Mark, okay. So we'll send that to you, Mark, so it'll be a DocuSign. And then you'll get the, the documents for the policy summary also to.
And we will send you an email saying, we'll be sending you a DocuSign, because that's probably one of the biggest ways that the hackers get into accounts is they send a DocuSign that you think. So we will send you a heads up, so you know it's legitimate, it's coming from us.
And if you ever have any questions, always just call me, because that's what Lance does. He gets, if he gets, he's been locked DocuSigns to Lance all the time and he just always calls me, is this legit? Yeah, you know, we're good, so.
Any other questions?
Uh, yeah, I do, and probably just from my knowledge.
Yeah.
What, what is E and O parentheses employees, is that just a number of employees we have?
So your E and O coverage is, that's errors and omissions, that's professional coverage. That's, so that's the number of employees that are covered under your errors and omissions. So that's a professional policy. A decision was made and that decision harmed me, doesn't have to be physical damage. So it's different than your liability where there you're at.
So there's no connection between that one and our payroll?
Correct.
Okay, so I just, we're down fourteen percent and I didn't know if that was a number of employees. And then we're up thirteen and a percent on payroll. But if that, there's no connection there, then.
Those are the employees that need to have that errors and omissions covered.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Part of my head, seven questions? Uh-oh, during the meeting at ten thirty-three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark, for the safety. All right, I'm going to go get my stuff. I didn't know, I was going to be married after some, I'll run up there, get my, uh, information and then we can follow that, so.